Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the Planning Board of the Town of Virginia. It's the clock. We'll start with the Pledge Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, individual liberty and justice for all. If there's an emergency or exit cell at the door, to the left, to the left, that's where that works. That won't be so bad. Anyhow, I've got to ask you, ladies and gentlemen, leave the room momentarily because we have an executive session we have to go into right now. If you all would please for a few minutes, please. Thank you. Sorry. Welcome all again. We're coming out of the executive session going to the regular meeting. First thing on the agenda is a public hearing. Turkey Hollow. Timber first. So, John, you want to stop? First, do you want to come up and go to the microphone, please, and address yourself, who you are and so forth?
My name is Christopher Prentice. Here, I'm representing Turkey Hollow. I'm the forester for the Tamarack Preserve or Turkey Hollow, Inc.
Okay. This public hearing has been continued for quite a while. The reason being is Mr. Prentice is the named town consulting forester. We needed to identify and the town needed to hire an alternate, which we have done. The gentleman who's with us this evening. The county raised some issues and they predominantly dealt with a forester's report. So, we have Mr. Feldweg with us this evening. And basically, what I would recommend, Mr. Chairman, is that he be asked to enter his report or a summary of his report into the record, at which time you could open the public hearing. I believe there has been no substantive comments to date, but we'll check one last time. That being the case, you could close the public hearing at that point in time. Unfortunately, we're still waiting for a response from the county, so we may go no farther than closing the public hearing. But we would expect to hear from the county before the next meeting, so I would ask that you would put it on. But the next order of business would be to hear from Mr. Feldweg on behalf of the town.
Mr. Feldweg, you step over the mic and give your report, please.
Good evening, everyone. My name again is Brenton Feldweg. I'm a forester, independent forester, also owner-operator of Forestall Consulting and Sawmilling. I did review the application and certainly reviewed, as the county had mentioned, the five-year update for this piece of property. The five-year update of the forest management plan that Mr. Prentice had developed. And I found it, you know, I found it complete. I found it responsible and a well-planned, a well-planned forest management plan. There was certainly consideration taken for use of the New York State best practices for, you know, for timber harvesting with regards to stream crossings. He's proposing a bridge to cross the one stream that goes right down through the middle of the property. Temporary steel bridge that will be set with a machine called a forwarder, which is an extremely low-impact way to set a bridge on a stream. So, that certainly is well-thought-out. And, you know, the prescriptions for the forest stands that he included in the update, I found to be certainly within, you know, a reasonable recommendation for, you know, for this property. So, I will submit my comments as you have written in front of you and certainly entertain any questions that, you know, that the board may have. Hopefully, all of us have had a chance to review it. And if I have to, if I can clear up any jargon that you found in there that you didn't understand, I'd be happy to do that and entertain any questions anybody has.
Any questions, any on the board?
The, thank you for your report. It was very clear, very easy to read, very comprehensive.
Thank you, yeah.
We appreciate that very much. The only change from what Chris had originally submitted when we were talking about it as a board was an agreement to not clear trees on the ridge line, which I think you were basically like, yeah, that would be good for me, too. I just wanted to make sure that that provision is still in play, that there will be no clearing of trees on the ridge line.
That is correct.
Okay. Because we don't have a plan.
Yeah. And I interpreted what he had recommended here and prescribed here as a selective harvest, even though it's a salvage cut, you know, which, you know, a selective harvest and a salvage cut tend to be a little bit heavier, but still, you know, the appearance of the land use, you know, for a selective harvest is very hard to... It really doesn't change much. It's very hard to tell that a selective harvest was done looking at it from, you know, from a surrounding ridge top.
Okay. Great. Thank you.
I have a question. Is there any form... I'm sorry. Okay, there you go. Are there any plans for reclamation of any of the trees that are coming down? Or, I'm sure you're doing some clearing. So, is there any reclamation of any of the forestry edol? Is there a plan for that?
There isn't any plan. I mean, typically, an oak or northern hardwood stand in the northeast, it's reliant on natural regeneration. So, that's what's going to fill back in. Typically, you'll get birch, you'll get maple, and, you know, cross your fingers, hopefully you'll get some oak to come in, too. So...
So, we're not talking about any clear cutting?
No. There is no clear cutting.
Okay.
No, I have nothing to add to what John said. The board, if it has no more questions, could close the public hearing. As John indicated, we can't make a decision tonight because we haven't heard back from Dutchess County on the referral. It is a seeker unlisted action. And when the board is ready to consider approval, it will have to go through the seeker part two and make a seeker determination. If it makes the determination a negative declaration, then it can proceed to a vote relative to potential approval of the application.
Mr. Chairman, I just would like for the record to make a couple of final comments. The fact that the forest management plan has been reviewed by a consulting forester and accepted, that satisfies one of the requirements in our code. It also addresses one of the county's first comments. The other county comments dealt with the separation distance and refraining from cutting within 50 foot on either side of the stream. This was discussed at the last meeting. 50 foot seems to make sense within the context of this type of harvest. And unless you felt there was something extraordinary there, I think it was the recommendation of Mr. Feldweg and as proposed by Mr. Prentice, that that was more than sufficient since it was only in a limited area. And he has, just for the record, obtained a... obtained coverage under a speedy's permit for the temporary stream crossing. So, in other words, they've looked at these and, as Mr. Feldweg indicated, it's a fairly standard way of crossing the stream. They have a general permit and providing you file properly and give them the information, you get coverage. And Mr. Prentice has submitted documentation of coverage. So, the only thing that's waiting is the county. And I believe that the report from the consulting forester clearly addressed the county's concerns.
What was the date when we sent over the...
I just did it this week.
Oh.
So, and I asked for it before the next one. So, we'll see what happens.
The county's usually pretty good.
Yeah.
So, we need a motion to close the public hearing.
I'll make that motion.
All in favor? I so carry's in. So, we're just waiting on the county's referral and we'll take it from there, okay?
Thank you.
So, hopefully by next meeting.
Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next on the agenda is Troutback Adaptive Reuse Plan Extension Approval Resolution. Okay. Someone from Troutback want to come up? Oh, Ratchet, I didn't see you. Peesh.
The board is... Is this is just for the special permit? Are you speaking to that?
How would you like us to begin, Paul? We have the request for renewal of the special.
Josh, you need to go to the microphone. I'm sorry.
Sorry, Bill, too.
Can you introduce yourself?
Sure. All right. Joshua Mackey, Mackey Budson Whalen for Troutback. As you all know, we're coming up, believe it or not, on a year of the special permit, which was granted by this board. So, I've written to the board asking that you vote to renew the special permit. That's the first order of business. Following that, we have Rich Renia, who will talk about site plan for a couple of the phases.
The board is aligned. We could take it in that order. And just this essentially administrative function. I prepared a document resolution that would effectively provide an additional year for the special permit. The applicant did indicate that they were the timely request. They indicated it was based on a number of senior circumstances. We talked to the applicant and made the request. Should we be simple and we recognize it? Please vote for approval.
John, judge in.
On this matter, no, sir. Mr. McCott is covering.
Okay. Ladies and gentlemen, will we report?
We make a motion that we approve the extension of the special.
Motion made and seconded. And I got a roll call vote, what do you believe?
Go ahead. So, the foregoing resolution was voted on by all members of the planning board voting as follows. Robert Boyle Jr., chairperson.
Yes.
Nina Peet, deputy chairperson.
Yes.
John Stephanopoulos.
Yes.
James Walsh.
Yes.
Walter Deitcher.
Yes.
Ken Topolsky.
Yes.
Jamie Vitello.
Yes.
So carries. Yes, sir.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The next is going to be Troutback Reuse Plan Revision of Phase Two and V6 Submental. And you're up.
Okay. Good evening, everybody. My name is Rich Renia, the engineer for the project. So, we were here before this board a few months back and we had talked in the beginning of the year, too, talked about which phases that Troutback was going to pursue next. So, what they're pursuing is Phase Two and Phase Six from the original ARP master plan. And for some of the new members, I'll read the plan here and try to talk into the microphone.
Do you want to put that on the screen? He has available.
It's up to the board.
Which would be easier to see?
Do I have the plan?
Yes.
Which one is it?
It's Troutback.
And so, this was the Adaptive Reuse Plan?
This is the overall.
So, I was just going to point at the overall.
Sorry.
Quickly. No, I think I got it. So, just very quickly, and this goes back to the Troutback Adaptive Reuse that was already approved. But for the new members, there was a total of eight phases. So, out of those phases, the approval... The idea always was, the original approval was the ARP master plan approval and then the approval of Phase One. And then after that, each phase comes back before this planning board for review and approval. So, what we're doing now is we're back before you for Phase Two and for Phase Six. I'll start with Phase Two, which is represented on the board there.
Could you just orient us on the map?
Yes.
Why you have that? Troutback Phase, Troutback Phase Two.
So, on the map, this is the existing manor house here. This is the existing circle that you pull up in the front door, which has a small redesign to it to make it more local. This is the bridge. And this is the stream. This is Leedsville Road here.
Not this road. It's one entrance.
This is Yellow City Road here.
72 and 7.
So, these are all existing entrances. The year, the year.
So, Phase Two deals with the manor house.
So, Phase Two is the manor house, service entrance and conservatory dining area. There are improvements to those two areas. It's about a 1,600 square foot improvement to the service entrance in the loading dock area. And then about a 635 square foot improvement or enclosure of an existing exterior dining area that would be enclosed with glass panels and it's called the conservatory dining area. And it's located right off the existing main dining room. Also included in this phase is the reconfiguration of the employee parking area and the service yard the outside of the service area entrance. That's also existing, so that's being better formalized. The vehicle connection to Spingarn Road, that is being formalized so that we can connect from the manor house to Spingarn Road. And I'll point that out. So, this drive connection does not currently exist. So, this is that connection that becomes a result of Phase Two. During the ARP, it was discussed of how do we keep traffic and trucks off of Yellow City Road? So, the solution was that if we make that connection, then service vehicles can come down Yellow City. They can pull into the existing Troutback service entrance. They could make their deliveries and then they could not have to come back on Yellow City Road. They can take that connection route and they'll... It'll take them out to Leedsville Road because it's a much better intersection of Route 343 and Leedsville to pull out of Leeds... out of that entrance rather than having a truck on Yellow City trying to pull back out on the 343. So, that's the idea of that connection. So, Phase Two is that connection is included in that. The other things that we've now... We've made a couple of changes where we added a couple of things to Phase Two that were approved in other phases. So, from the original Phase Four is this connection that we're proposing now, the rerouting of the Spingarn to Leedsville. And then the rough-in of some of the additional parking areas, and I'll point those out. Which is up here. So, later phases include additional development in that area. And what we've... What we're looking at now is, and we had described to the board, is that the... To construct this site properly, we need a staging area for the contractor. We need a spot for their people to be able to park. So, we want to formalize that now, but formalize it in an area that's... That would receive a parking lot in the future. So, one change that we've made in this submission that's a little bit different, I'll point out to you, is there's a standard tree... A standard trees here. And that standard trees has been a large part of the discussion of the ARP. The last submission of this that you saw had the parking area over here. We made a shift of this so we can save more trees at this point. Because also included in this phase is to do the landscaping that's out along Route 343. We want to get that started early so that starts to get thicker and has more time to grow. So, we're able to reconfigure this a little bit and save even more of those trees because we know it's a concern to the public. So, that's a change in this. One of the other changes that we've shown in this that we pulled from Phases Three and Five is trying to get a head start on the installation of two additional septic sewage disposal areas that we have multiple sewage disposal areas that are going to be installed in the existing field when you come around the corner along 343, that existing meadow. That's going to be a sewage disposal area. And then that remains untouched. But we'd like to get some of that construction done now. So, that's Phase Two. Phase Six... Phase Six is the Delamater House renovation. So, in the ARP, it was originally approved for... Or the Delamater House to be renovated and turned into a restaurant. So, it was going to have 87 seats in it. It would have a... An addition put on. It would have a kitchen in the basement. The thinking has changed from Troutback from operation standpoint, from management standpoint, that they didn't really feel that having a second restaurant on the site was going to work for them as well as what they originally thought that it would be. So, the thinking for the renovation now is to simplify it, pull back the addition, restore the existing house and just turn it into a two-room suite. So, it's... We'll go through that next with the handout. But a lot less impact. So, when we were here the last time, one of the things that we had provided was a simple chart that showed what the differences were. Your legal counsel had asked that we actually prepare an impact analysis and enhance the chart, but describe that. So, we've done that. And what I've provided to you is a summary of the changes of the phases. Because one of the things that we're looking at doing now is you have to look at anything that we do on these next phases and how it appears and how it conforms to the exist... The original seeker determination that this board made. So, that's what we're going to key in on with this handout that we just gave you. So, in summary, for changes on the manor house improvement, the building footprint is slightly larger, but that's to accommodate the... Some HVAC equipment and grading. That's at the service entrance. It's just a little bit bigger to accommodate that. And all these, you can... If you flip to the second page, you'll see a chart. And that's the chart that we had submitted. And that gives the very specific numbers. So, the building footprint increased by 100 square feet. As far as disturbance areas, go, there's some more disturbance in this phase that I had pointed out because we pulled in items from other phases. But there's no increase in overall disturbance. The impact on aesthetic resources is that the difference here is that we're installing landscaping that was going to be installed in later phases. Install that here, so we see that as a positive. And then from the rest of the change... There's no other changes here that have any impact or changes from the approved master plan. So, going through this chart, we can start at the top of the Phase Two chart. And basically, you'll see a description of the seeker consideration, all the column that's all the way over to the right. And this breaks everything down. You'll see that the majority are no changes. And then anything else is very small. So, there's two pages of that. Thinking that you don't need me to go through every item or else we could be here all night. So, Phase Six, if you flip to the fourth page. Phase Six is interesting because it is such a drastic change. It's such a drastic reduction. So, this one is very worthwhile into getting into a little bit more in understanding. So, starting from the summary of Phase Six, changing that use, as I had said, from a restaurant to a two-bedroom cabin. And it's a decrease in square footage by about 2,500 square feet. It's eliminating 87 seats of restaurant. So, it's basically eliminating an entire commercial restaurant facility that you might find anywhere in any town someplace. An 87-seat restaurant is a large restaurant. The water demand will be reduced by 2,100, almost 2,200 gallons per day. The traffic generation is going to decrease significantly. So, from the traffic report, the original traffic report, we were looking at the PM peak having an additional 23 vehicles because of the restaurant. So, now we're going to have 23 fewer vehicles during the PM peak. And then the Saturday peak, there'll be 28 fewer vehicles. So, overall, it's a very big reduction on traffic. The disturbance area, because there is no addition, there's a large reduction on that disturbance area of .77 acres. Then we also see... These are some of the impacts that were discussed, but they're a little bit harder to measure. But one of them is, an important one to talk about, is the reduction in noise. When we had our public hearing, there was a lot of people in the neighborhood and noise was a concern. In the ARP, we have noise mitigation. But removing this restaurant altogether is going to have a significant reduction in any potential noise just because of the reduction of the restaurant operations. Lighting impacts will decrease because with it not being a restaurant, we do not need the level of lighting that was originally proposed. Odor impacts, there won't be cooking equipment in a hood emitting exhaust in that location. So, that would be a reduction as well. And then the historic preservation. The original plan always called for a historic renovation of the Delamater House. That is still going to occur. Anything that we're proposing, any picture that we show you has to be approved by New York State Shippo. That's still proposed and that still will be done. But the... With this plan without the addition now, there's a better opportunity to restore the historic footprint and keep it to what it has always been without the addition. So, it makes the Shippo renovation a little simpler when it comes to that. And the building was always a residential building, so it's in keeping with what it was originally. And as I had said, there's no additions to the structure. So, that's the summary of what we feel are the reduction of impacts to Phase Six.
Okay. You did receive a memo from me. It's kind of patterned after the last memo and the last discussions we had when they were here in March. I'm not going to go through each item, but there's a couple of key things I think I need to review with the board. The first is they did submit separate addendum to the stormwater pollution prevention plan for each phase. We take no exception to the form and content of that information. It's shown on the drawings. The only thing I will note, and I note elsewhere here, is there's a lot of coordination and reconciliation that has to be done between the landscaping plan and the stormwater management features. I know it's difficult to show on a plan set, but there might be some additional notes and other things because the stormwater, they spent a lot of time on it and I'd like to make sure it works the way they intend it to work. They still need Dutchess County Department of Health approval. They note for the wastewater system, we're going to need confirmation and/or clarification that the water system doesn't require anything to support these modifications as well. The speedy's permit will need to be updated. I'm going to leave the seeker analysis. They have... They did a consistency statement. I'll leave Paul to discuss that one. But there was a couple of things they did. And to highlight what Rich is saying is, for instance, in the wastewater engineering report that they prepared as part of their documentation, the septic system for an 87-seat restaurant is a rather substantial installation. They are reducing it probably by about 75% to just accommodate. And I think... Anthony, well, shoot me. I don't think they took enough credit for the impacts that they are reducing by making that particular change. There is also, and I'll stick with Phase Six, there was... There is also, and I'll stick with Phase 6, there was going to be a big renovation to a parking area across the way. That renovation now goes away. That parking area gets touched at a later phase when it's more appropriate to do it, when there's other things going on onsite. And they reduced the parking here. They're going to put two spaces for a small unit. It's substantially reduced. They corrected some of the, as Rich noted, we will need that OPRHP sign-off. But again, it makes it easier because they are now working in concert with OPRHP. They, OPRHP's comments, if you remember back, had concerns about the addition and the integration of a restaurant with the old residential structure. I'm sure those concerns go away. It's still not an easy task to satisfy those folks, but it has been made easier. The lighting has been substantially reduced. I do have concerns, and Rich did note it, that they still have to revisit this a little bit with their lighting engineer. Even though it is a residential component, there are some substantial paths, and it would have seemed that some additional path lighting probably should be considered. Some technical details. Phase 2, I'll jump to Phase 2. They've improved the back of the, or the north side of the manor house. I did ask for a truck turning analysis. It indicated it was in the plan set. I didn't find it, so I would like to see a truck turning analysis because that's the key thing back there. They now have a refuse enclosure. They have a few other things. It looks like they have a loading dock established, so it would be nice to see how everything functions. And when it comes to refuse, we'd also probably ask for the frequency of pickup, what days and times. If I remember back to the public hearing, some of the people were concerned about when they took the garbage out. So we might as well get that in the record. As Rich said, the contractor parking area, and that's what it is, has been consolidated into one area. I think the consolidation makes sense. As Rich says, it does allow them to leave up some screening. They've also proposed fencing and opaque screening around the fencing of this temporary area. So they're going to put, I would suspect, a temporary chain-link fence with some sort of opaque screen on the outside adhered to it. They have laid it out as now a contractor's yard. There is a temporary office. There are storage trailers and storage boxes indicated. There's an area set aside for parking of contractor cars or trucks. I'd like to see how that gets laid out a little bit so we understand how it functions a little bit better, because right now they're just showing wide open. The other question I have, are you going to bring utilities into that contractor's office, or is that just going to be, you're going to use porta-johns and maybe just electric? It just needs to be dealt with.
Just electric at the little office, right?
Okay. It just needs to be shown how that's going to be accomplished. They've got some storm drainage issues they need to tighten up. The one thing I did notice is, Rich did rethink the staff parking and other along the backside of this. And it all used to face internally. Now they've kind of turned it 180 degrees so it all faces Yellow City Road. I don't necessarily have a problem with that. I think we probably need a simple cross-section through that area because there's a stone wall, there's substantial plantings shown, but still, you've got cars that are going to be pulling, and you want to make sure the light intrusion from cars parking and entering and leaving is not out onto the road. So I'd like to see that area a little better. And again, there are some minor inconsistencies. But all in all, from a technical aspect, the drawings really just need to be tweaked a little bit. And then I'll turn this over to Paul with respect to the consistency element.
And I think I'm essentially in the same place as John. We had talked a couple of times with the applicant's representatives, and I think they have presented SEAKER consistency analysis that goes through and touches all the potential impacts and talks about how they're either consistent with the impacts of the prior application as approved, or in some cases have lessened those impacts. What, just, so I'm satisfied that they've provided consistency narrative for SEAKER purposes. In talking with John, what we were thinking, and I was thinking more about this as I was driving down here, we have new board members, and this is a voluminous record. The board had issued a substantial negative declaration that was very detailed and referenced a lot of different pieces of the application, things like the visual analysis, the plans for addressing noise impacts and mitigation during construction, et cetera, et cetera. And our thought is really that the next appropriate step may be for your consultants to basically take what they've provided and kind of provide an analysis like we did prior to the last negative declaration for the board's consideration. And also, including with that, some of those documents that I referred to that would be relevant to the board's consideration as to the consistency of these changes with what was previously analyzed. And that would probably be easier than providing detailed comments to the applicant and going back and forth on the consistency narrative. So if the board's all right with that, John and I would work on that over the next period of time before this comes back. But overall, I think, you know, from my perspective, you know, and thinking about the last go-around, you know, it's worth the board considering when it might want to set a public hearing so we can make sure that we get public comment in on any changes sooner rather than later, you know, depending on the board's comfort level with the information that's been provided to date.
Ladies and gentlemen, it's open for discussion right now. What's your pleasure and what you want to do? And everyone speak your opinion about it.
I have a question. My questions were going to be, what about noise? What about light in the new parking lot? All those things you've already discussed. And you said you prepared a document, or you discussed that there's a document that answers those questions?
Relative to the proposal that was previously approved. And so it's a very good question because this proposal has modifications and revisions to that, so we need to match it up and make sure that the impacts are not going to be greater. And so those are the documents that we would want to make sure you were provided and that we could, you know, reference for you.
Well, just to make this quicker so you don't have to come back and do this again and again and again. The relocation of the construction parking lot?
Yes.
Is that going to be visible from 343?
From this direction, and we're putting a fence around it.
Okay.
And this, it's from here all the way down 343 that gets the additional plantings of vegetation. So the idea is that this is fenced in. It has a screening material on it, kind of like the green mesh material, the Santa Tennis Court. And then this landscaping gets in now at the same time that that's put in.
And then lights during the winter for construction?
That will not have lights, other than the construction trailer that's shown here.
Okay.
Would have electricity and have operating lights inside.
But no work lights for people?
Correct.
Okay.
No streetlights, no parking lot lights are proposed out there.
The one thing you should note, the reason that they chose that is that's ultimately going to be developed. That's ultimately going to be, I think, if I remember correctly, the service yard and some administrative offices in that area.
Yeah.
So what they're proposing to do is basically prep the area. And so that's why Paul and I thought it would be appropriate if we distilled down some of the, because they did some detailed visuals, that you see what that ultimately will look like once the plantings are in. So the goal was, and Trautbeck came up with it, is since the plantings only get bigger with time and get thicker, the earlier we get them in, the better. So what we'd like, what they want to do is put them in now. And so what we'll be seeing is essentially there will be buildings there in the future, but for a temporary basis, we'll be seeing an opaque fence and some other stuff that to give the screening some time to move in. You won't see a naked parking lot. But that's why we wanted to take the next step and kind of distill everything down and kind of put it in context for you folks.
Hey, that was going to be one of my questions, is when was the landscaping going to occur?
Well, ultimately, sir, that's going to be up to you. They're proposing to do it at this phase. One would suggest that that probably is the first portion of the phase in areas where they can do it, because there is some septic work that goes there and some other things. So it might be a progressive. You might have to, like, for instance, landscape the area that directly is associated with the contractor's yard first, and then, you know, move on and do it. But certainly, as part of Phase 2, their proposal is all the landscaping at the completion of Phase 2 will be in place.
Correct. So that parking area that you were asking about, it goes right in this development area here. So that's the idea, to not to just disturb something with it that's going to be disturbed.
And we do have a list of the plantings that are proposed?
Yes.
And then, as I'm a new member, so please forgive me, but what are you looking for from us this evening? What is our next step? Will be able to react to something before we have a public meeting, a public hearing, sorry?
Well, I guess the question for you all tonight is whether or not you're comfortable with the information that's provided to set a public hearing. And that's, you know, entirely within your discretion for the next meeting. That hearing would not occur until?
July 10th.
July 10th, because we need to notice, you know, send out notice and publish it and that sort of thing. But in the meantime, in preparation for that meeting, John and I would do our homework on the SEAKER side to sort of match everything up and make sure you have all that information so when you get to the hearing, you know, you're more informed about how this relates to SEAKER. And the applicant would be looking at John's memo and making the tweaks to the plans that John was talking about so that you all would have updated plan set by the time it comes around to the public hearing.
But I presume we can proceed if the board sees fit without these tweaks being made? We can schedule the public hearing?
Yes.
Okay.
You will also want to, and you would not have to do it tonight. You may want to wait until you get the updated plan set. There's going to need to be a referral to Dutchess County Planning Department. And do we also have an Ag statement that needs to go out on this one? Judy, as part of the application, I would imagine we do.
I believe we do.
Yes, we'll have to circle.
This project is not in the Ag district, but there are properties directly across the street, so we've taken in the past that abutting properties or adjoining properties deserve notice, so.
Right.
And I think they did prepare one.
Good. In the next, when you guys resubmit, in the next submittal, do you think you could provide a comparison, a site plan comparison for this, the Phase 2 changes versus what was originally approved?
Kind of like an overlay?
Like an overlay?
Yeah, we could.
And also maybe quantify, so it says, in the application materials, it says, you know, there's a rough out of staff parking and a rough in of the gravel guest parking area. Do you think you can provide some numbers, just how many parking spaces you're going to accommodate now? What's moving?
Okay.
How many were approved, but what's going to be temporary? Because I think one of the concerns that came up quite a bit during the original public hearing was that that parking area that you're talking about and the fact that it would be screened by that grove of trees. And if there's the potential for that shift over to the west to impact that, I think it would be important for us to understand.
Okay.
Anything else? What's your pleasure, ladies and gentlemen? What would you like to do this evening with this?
Yeah, I think we'd like to move forward to the public hearing.
Need a motion to have the public hearing on open for discussion? Go ahead.
I would like to amend the motion, subject to receipt of all the materials by, and if not, if Judy doesn't receive them, we can cancel the public hearing. So we have enough time to prepare.
Actually, I don't think you, if you vote to do the public hearing tonight, it gets advertised, so you want to cancel it, what typically would happen is?
You just open it and you can...
Yeah, you open it, and if you don't feel we're complete or there's still questions, it could just be a question that comes up that night, you would adjourn it.
You continue the public hearing. You can open it up. So the proposal is to have the public hearing on July 10th. Need a second on to it?
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Uh...
There you go.
And just for clarity, what that would mean is the submittal date for the July 10th meeting, I think, is three weeks in advance? So you'd like to have that material in your hands in advance of that meeting?
Well, in advance of the next planning work meeting, so that we can review it and talk about it.
Oh, okay. I didn't understand that. That's why I asked for the clarity.
The Friday before?
Yeah, because you have to get it in line.
So the Friday before the next meeting is next Friday? 21st?
So you want us to have, whatever we can get pulled together, we'll get for next Friday?
But I think you're also looking for Paul's and my material on that same day. Oh, boy. Okay.
For what they have to do, I don't know if there's anything that they need from us on the SEAKER consistency. I think what I was hearing from John, I haven't seen his comment letter yet, is some more minor tweaks.
Yeah, it's mostly site planning issues, which is...
Okay. And it sounded to me like our current plan set may be good enough to do the county circulation?
Yeah, none of the tweaks are substantive enough to change it. The county's not going to. No. Yeah, they've already been around, so you could theoretically circulate what you have, yes.
Okay. If you could do that, that would be great too, because that's always something, you know, that we're, it's always a step we're waiting on, so it'd be great to get that out.
Can you, in order to do that, can you...
Get an updated packet to...
Yes. As many, Judy will let us know as many copies as she needs, size is probably one full-size set?
Yeah. And a PDF, which isn't working right now on my computer.
So just that we all have our dates clear, so you guys are going to resubmit a packet to this, to Judy sometime before, by or before?
June 21st.
The public hearings will be on July 10th.
But this, we could put, we would put this on the agenda for the June 26th meeting so that we can talk about it.
Yes, definitely.
I'm reminded that during the ARP process, I believe we expanded the area of notifications to neighbors. Did we voluntarily do that, in our process?
I know we're talking.
Send out notice, so we should just, I'll get back in at one day. I think we might have went with something like 1,500 feet or something like that.
We submitted a press list.
It was an expanded list of neighbors that we were offering to get notice, just once we should have done that.
Any else?
Okay. Thank you very much.
Sorry about that.
Silo is, who's up? Okay, here we go.
Okay, have you on? Perfect, I have you on speaker.
I appreciate it, thank you.
Good evening. Yes, Amanda Rep. I am here with Stoneleaf Construction, and I have Martine Chajon on the phone, representing the owners.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening. All right, so we are here to resubmit for the lot merge of Lakeside Lots 27 and 29 Martine, would you like to add anything?
No, I didn't hear the last thing that you said. All that I heard unfortunately was that you are ready to resubmit. And the only thing that I would add to whatever it is that you said is that I'm sorry that I can't be there in person. I wasn't aware that until this morning that remote appearances were not going to be allowed for this particular hearing. But I will reiterate on my behalf and as well as on behalf of our client, their intent to be 100% fully compliant and cooperative with the planning board. And I think that to date, they have done so, and that shows their, their good faith and their, their willingness to cooperate.
Again, it's me. This consists of two separate components. First is a subdivision minor because it's a lot consolidation. They're taking two lots and putting them together. The last time we were here, I had issued a memo. They've submitted a lot of documentation, but nothing in the subdivision line yet. We still need a subdivision plat, we still need all that documentation. What they have done however, is worked very extensively on the second half of this, which is site plan approval. And it's kind of an oddity. It's a single-family home within a development. Unfortunately, it's a rather large, single-family home in this development, and it's consolidated on two lots. So, what they have done is they made a series of submittals. And if any of you are familiar with the way that Silo has transpired, any of the estate lots have a series of guidelines that they must file before they get a building permit or must follow, excuse me. There's engineering plans, there's architecture plans, there's landscaping plans, there's certain requirements. So, in, and there's also an internal review that is conducted by the Silo Ridge Homeowners' Association. They have a design review committee that goes through all these proposals and analyzes them. So, the documentation that has been submitted to date consists of all the drawings, which are effectively a site plan set for a single-family home. It matches in large part the submissions that Mike Segalkin and myself typically see for an estate lot. There's a civil set, there's a landscaping set, and there's an architectural set that includes mechanical, electrical, plumbing, and structural. So, all that documentation has been submitted. They finally perfected and submitted a site plan application. Couple things I need to make the board aware of. First off, Paul and I did a kind of exercise. It seems intuitive that this would be considered a minor sub, minor site plan since it's a single-family home. However, if you look at the criteria, it is a single-family home. It has 12 bedrooms however, and it includes what's identified on the architectural plans as staff quarters. So, it kind of doesn't fit the categories. The base building coverage, in other words, the footprint of the entire building is 12,956 square feet. So, the next criteria would be alteration of land, 10,000 square feet. So, you got a building that exceeds and you've got the bedrooms. So, it would seem unfortunately that it's, it exceeds the thresholds for a minor project and must therefore be considered a major project. Well, what's that mean? It means you need to hold a public hearing. But it also, because of the fact that it's a subdivision, you also need to hold a subdivision public hearing. So, the only thing we have to be careful of is to properly notice both public hearings when and if you're ready to do that. Next thing is, this is an internal lot. In other words, it's not on the outbound of Silo. You can't see it from the surrounding road network. So, the only likely impact of this particular unique development is within Silo itself. And I would submit to you that by virtue of the fact that Silo's own internal control organization, the design review committee, has signed off on this, that that acknowledges their acceptance. There's not much else we can do. And that typically means that it meets the aesthetics and checks the community character compliance boxes for a site plan. They've signed off on it. And the other thing that we need to check, does it meet the bulk regulations? When you approve Silo, you approved various bulk regulations. This complies with all those bulk regulations, except they came up with a unique one that I can't find in our records, but I applaud them for it. When you merge two lots, rather than have the standard side yard setback, they require that you double the side yard setback. So, the standard side yard setback throughout Silo is 7.5 feet. The way this building is configured, it is 15 feet. There's one typo on here that measures over 15 feet, but it's labeled 10.2, but it's a typo, the best I can tell. So, the long and short of it is, and I wrestled with this, we don't typically, myself and our Paul, don't typically comment on what goes on inside these boxes merely to make sure that it complies, in the case of an estate lot, with the estate lot guidelines and that we get sign off from Silo. We have sign off from Silo. To the best I can tell, this complies with the estate lot guidelines, even though it doesn't have to, because it's not considered an estate lot. So, I didn't spend a lot of time reviewing the site plan, just to make sure it made sense. But I look to you folks for direction. I think, Paul, correct me if I'm wrong, that's where we are? We would recommend, there's enough information in the record, despite the fact we don't have a subdivision plat, to actually schedule and hold the public hearings at your earliest convenience, should you desire to do so.
I have a procedural question because I feel like we haven't, so when we talked about what, last meeting or two meetings ago, we talked about what actions at Silo Ridge reopen the master development site plan approval process. And I understood from that discussion that single-family homes needed individual site plan approval, right? They didn't open up the whole master development plan process, but individual site plans like this one need site plan approval from this board. And is there a condition on that unless, only if they exceed the allowable guidelines that were established in the findings?
Paul and I've wrestled with this, and I'm going to give you the way it's been implemented to date.
Okay.
All of the site plans were theoretically approved as part of the original development. So, all the single-family homes were technically approved. Because no one knew exactly what was going to be built on the estate lots, they were approved subject to the guidelines. So, as long as they met those guidelines, no further approval was necessary. In other words, there was a building envelope established on some of the lots, there was limitations on. So, the only times they've come back to you is when they've exceeded any of those envelopes, if you will.
Okay.
And unfortunate, or fortunately, other than the building footprint, this doesn't exceed any of those envelopes. It's within the area of the, it's within the building envelope for these two lots as you merged them. It doesn't trigger anything else. But for the most part, this would be, as long as it checked all the boxes, you wouldn't ordinarily see it but for the fact it requires a lot merger.
Okay.
Is that correct, Paul?
A lot merger and it exceeds the footprint.
Right.
And on the non-state lots, was, did the master plan presume that the residence would be one of X number of pre-conceived models of house?
I, John... In each of the various communities, there are design parameters for the house. So, as long as you meet that, so for instance, when an estate lot comes forward, one of the things that's required is an architect's certification that says, "We reviewed the design guidelines for the estate lots and we're selecting from the following categories, and yes, this complies." And so, and this one, the best I can tell for this particular community, I think it's the Lakeside Villas.
Lakeside.
It complies, and I read through the record of the design review committee, they tweaked a few things to make sure it does. So, architects approvals are not, not required for anything but, anything other than the estate lots. So, as long as this is signed off by the internal committee, it's considered to be consistent with the requirements.
Right. And just back to Nina's question, what I saw as triggers for the board's jurisdiction over this application are, one, the need for the subdivision merger. And, and that is something that, you know, does not involve Silo, it only involves the landowner at this point. And then similarly, under the Phase One site plan approval for Silo, it required the applicant to come back for any changes. And to the extent that this proposal is, you know, basically what the original site plan approval for Phase One contemplated was two houses on two lots, each, I believe, something like 4,700 square feet in size.
Right.
And now, what we have is, you know, a house that has a footprint that is quite a bit larger. So, you know, and the similar logic is Silo's not involved, but the new property owners are, they need to get that site plan approval, and so that's where we are.
And this might speak to what you asked, but did the original design guidelines, were they done within concert, in concert with the planning board? Were they brought before the planning board?
Yes, sir, they were. They're embodied in a document called the master development plan, which is a rather large, matter of fact, I might have bits and pieces of it here with me if I...
So, then, but as long as it meets those guidelines, those guidelines will approve by this board?
That is correct. Matter of fact, matter of fact, I do have some of those guidelines here. You can page, you can page through them if you wish. I brought, this is for the South Lawn area.
And I also have this as well, if you'd like to look through.
So...
Last time we talked about you carrying on that material with the board?
They did submit it. Unfortunately, I think it kind of got lost and everything. Judy got it, and we focused on getting me hard copy so I could review it. But I think there was an electronic submission from the applicant on March, on May 15th, and it incorporated everything that you had asked for. And I think somehow it got lost, and I, I don't know how. I think Judy and my wires might have gotten crossed.
The link is expired.
I will resend it immediately.
Do you consider the document, just so that we all have it, maybe most of us aren't on board?
Sure. Yeah. It is a pretty extensive document, so, yeah.
So, it's actually color, it's actually printed, it's 11 by 17, it's a, it's a pretty, and to answer your question, the board had a lot of input and discussions on everything that went in there. And that's why, that's the way it evolved.
This is, that's the, kind of the governing document overall for the resort.
I got one question on the whole thing, is the propane tank, what's close to the road? Do you have something buffing so a plow truck don't hit the fill pipe or so forth like that, you know?
It's, it's been staged the same way all the other propane tanks are. It needs a setback of greater than 10 feet from the front property line and everything like that. So, that's one of the things Mike checks, and this does actually meet it. Because believe it or not, it's, this house is set a little farther back from the road than most houses. So, there is, despite the fact that it's so large, it is, it is back. There is a retaining wall that's uptight that we got to take a look at, but other than that, the propane fill is, is out of the roadway right of way and meets all the standards.
My point being, it's probably what they can do, the bigger tank than the normal one.
It is.
It's not shown, believe it or not, on the drawings, what size tank it is yet.
I think it's a 1,900.
And this typical is a thousand.
Yeah.
It's a little bit bigger.
Yeah.
So, if I may, for clarity purposes, we're looking at a conversion of 27 and 29 lots, the numbers, right?
Yep.
We eliminated 28.
No. 28, you got to go back.
Okay.
28 was the lower Lakeside lots, I want to say were Phase One E, which did not, which got filed after Phase One A.
So...
So, what happened was, when they went to, before they got final approval for that phase, they internally eliminated lots. So, the plat that got filed for this phase had certain lots already omitted. And I don't, I don't have that paperwork in front of me, but I actually, as Paul and Nina will tell you, I actually went through filed map by filed map to figure out what lots have been eliminated. And Lot 28 was previously dropped out because they wanted to offer a little better lots along the lake, because this actually fronts out on the lake, so they wanted to, and they thought they were too tight. So, Lot 28 was part of the overall approval. But when they actually filed the individual phase, there was no Lot 28. They just did not renumber things because they wanted to stay consistent.
Okay, so this is a change in the master plan of the development itself, then?
That, that, the change...
Well, when we're talking about combining two lots...
Well, the merging of two lots was always a possibility. So, I, I don't know, I can't answer your question, I guess, I don't, because I don't understand it.
I mean, I don't understand, like, this is the merging of two, I mean, I am paraphrasing, but I had sort of the same question, because it's related to what kind of action comes back in front of the board. The merging of two lots is now...
It's a change.
It's a change in the overall master development plan. So, does that trigger the applicant having to come back in front of the board and revise the master?
Well, but, but, and I, legally, I can't say, but the original developer is not in any way involved in this activity. This is a homeowner, an individual, a private individual, it's an LLC, that purchased two lots and has made the independent decision to merge those lots. So, the only person that, the only entity is the owner of these lots. And what's happened is Silo, the homeowners' association, and those elements have now taken over. And in your point, they've signed off on it. They're saying it's consistent with what we believe, and we're just going the extra mile to get the site plan because it, it is so markedly different. But Silo, the original developer, is not involved.
Okay, um, okay, just one more, one more thought. So there was a maximum amount of square footage on each one of those lots. So now we're going to twelve thousand nine hundred and fifty-six square feet? Now, doesn't that also have a change in the terms of what they were able to build on those lots, square footage wise? Am I asking, I mean?
Well, technically, technically speaking, you had three lots, originally. The three lots had thirty, I think the number that was used for, for planning purposes was like thirty-seven fifty square foot.
Okay.
Footprint on each lot. All right? They've merged all the lots. So technically speaking, if you want to do simple math, thirty-seven times three is somewhere around eleven thousand square feet. So it's, it's about the same thing. What really was the driving factor on a lot of these things was the number of bedrooms. So I think each one of those was a five-bedroom house.
Correct.
So they had a possibility of up to fifteen bedrooms. They now have twelve bedrooms. So how you want to slice it, it, and, and what, what it is, is, it's, it's really, I, I, it seems counterintuitive, but it's, it's internally consistent with what was done. It's just something we're not used to seeing.
Okay.
That's what I, I, I was going to say that if you never knew it was going to be a seventeen thou, a twelve thousand square foot house, if we never knew that, and it's just this simple lot merge, what would our actions be? Because we, the last meeting, we talked about key stud and what, and we've asked them to come back and bring a plan. But other meetings where we're dealing with smaller lots, do we go into, what are they going to build there? What is, we'll have a chance to say, no, this house feels inappropriate at twelve, at twelve thousand square feet. So I don't know, right now, what if they decide to make it eight thousand, because twelve thousand is too much and they want to do something else there?
Well, I just needed some clarification here.
Right.
And that's why I was just posing that, uh, is, is it an appropriate move? And that's my question.
And I, and I, I, the only thing I will say, and Paul and I've had this discussion a couple of times, and I'll defer to him because I'm not an attorney, I'm just a, I'm just a dumb numbers guy and the engineer. Um, but, but technically speaking, um, there's no hook for us to, in, in other words, they could have merged these two lots and built one house right in the middle that matched all their neighbors and just had bigger side yards. They could have, um, doubled the size of the house and said, hey, we, we want, we got two lots, we're going to make the house nine thousand square feet. Um, and as long as it met, as long as it didn't violate any of the yards, the bulk regulations that we approved, and was otherwise consistent with the Silo, um, guidelines, excuse, thank you, um, it, other than the subdivision, it never would've come to you. We wouldn't be asking for a site plan amendment. What, what, what triggered this amendment is the fact that it is so peculiar, and when you do the simple analysis of, of what is, constitutes a major site plan element, you find that this kind of goes off the rails, and that's why we kind of went this way. To be blunt with you, if we had gone through the exercise, and Paul and I debated this, and he'll probably shoot me, but if it had come up minor, we might not even be doing it. So I, I think that's, that's where this, this kind of goes, because it, it, the single-family homes were, were somewhat reviewed during the process, but then they were surrendered subject to certain criteria, to, to being with Silo. And as long as they meet the criteria that, that we put the fork in, which is the bulk regulations and a few other things, as long as they're consistent with that, there's not much we can do, particularly if Silo signs off internally.
Right.
I'm sorry.
Oh, go ahead.
Can we revisit, so you had mentioned that, and I flagged this in the meeting minutes from a couple of meetings ago because, you know, I was not clear, but you just raised it again about the bedrooms. I think last time, when we talked about this at the May eighth meeting, Ms. Rep was talking about how there were fifteen beds, like, there's these fifteen bedrooms, they're technically unassigned, right? Because there would be five bedrooms on lot twenty-seven, five bedrooms on lot twenty-eight, five bedrooms on lot twenty-nine. So there are fifteen bedrooms available. This guy is coming in with twelve bedrooms and that had maintained that there were fifteen total available. But then, John, you said, and I flagged this here because he didn't really understand it, that, that, that those five bedrooms that were on the merged lot were actually assigned somewhere else, like, they have been accounted for. And it seems like that you're saying the opposite now.
The bedrooms, the bedrooms are accounted for in the water system design, they are accounted for in the, um, sewage waste water disposal system, um, and then they're accounted in, in the master development plan. So Silo's position has always been, as long as we don't exceed the number of approved bedrooms, we're good. And so what happened was, when they dropped out lot twenty-eight, those five bedrooms that were associated with that lot, Silo said, we're dropping a lot, but we're not, we're not otherwise modifying any of our other program elements. We're keeping the same number of bedrooms. So they're kind of up to the homeowners association to kind of sign off on. And I think if I read the minutes from the various meetings, the homeowners association acknowledged that they were taking twelve bedrooms from their, and that it was okay with them. And as long as it stays below the numbers for water and sewer, I don't care.
Okay.
And I hope that clarifies it, I.
Yeah, that does clarify. It's not, it, I think we, we need to revisit the minutes.
Well, I think I was, I, I think what I had said there was, was kind of similar, but it got.
Yeah, okay.
Tweak wrong, but that's the way it is. Bedrooms are, bedrooms are kind of a weird, um, element in this whole thing, but they're a key element to Silo because, um, it, it dictates how many units they can have sometimes. Because.
So, so technically, there's no issue with merging lots and there's no, we're under the bedroom limit and they're in the right.
And all we're actually approving today is a public hearing, or the two public hearings necessary to.
Yes.
You can set the public hearing for the subdivision because we don't actually have subdivision application.
Well, no, we have an application, we don't have a plat.
Okay.
Okay, we, we, we have an application, we actually have a completed action by the county. So technically speaking, there's sufficient information in the record with which to conduct a public hearing. We just need to get a final plat, and we need to get the final plat quickly.
So there's no action for the board to take here tonight?
Other than, if you wish to set a public hearing, you may. If you do not wish to set a public hearing, would prefer to wait, you can do that also. I, I take no position either way.
The, the site plan does show the lots merge, so that's, you know.
So, gee, gentlemen, either we're going to, um, set a public hearing for June twelfth or not? What do we want to do?
July.
July.
July, I, okay, I'm sorry, July twelfth.
There were other minor revisions that needed to be made to the EAF.
Yeah.
Those have been done?
Yeah, I'd rather wait until we get all the information.
John?
What's, I mean, I'm open.
What's the agenda?
Unless we, as long as we have all the information that we need and if it comes in time, it was.
So we can do like we do at any other public hearing, you know, open the public hearing up and that the information's here, it's here, if it isn't, we continue it.
We'll make sure that in terms of the EAF, that that's, I, I didn't check back over that.
Yeah, okay. We can make the same deal with you that we made for Chalke.
Yeah, yes.
Same deal. Right, so we can make the same deal with these guys that we made for Chalke. Like, if you can get us everything by.
By next Friday.
By next Friday.
By next Friday.
And then we can talk about it at our next meeting.
Yep.
Can you choose ever once for this particulars, twenty-seven, twenty-nine, subdivision and site plan?
You can, you, you can do the same notice, you just have to say specifically, it's for a minor subdivision and, and site plan.
I got you covered.
I'm all ready for you.
So we need that in the motion?
Well, I, I have one more thought.
Okay.
Okay, sorry. Uh, I was thinking maybe about a site visit to take a look at what the situation's going to be. We've done that with other, um, parties in the past. It's been a while since I've been, um, I was there with the original master plan development way back when, when they even, you know, started cutting the ground. So I was just wondering if a site visit is, is in order here?
You can, that's.
You can, it's.
You can anytime you want. So all you would need to do is make arrangements for the manager because you have to get into the gate. They don't, they don't allow just anybody.
No.
Well, you, you understand that, yes.
Unless it's a very light aside.
Even that, you get escorted.
Jamie can take you.
There you go. So we need a motion to clarify this, let's get this straight so she knows what she needs to do. For.
There's no motion yet.
I don't, that's what I'm saying, we need a motion to make this.
I'll make a motion that we set the public hearing for the subdivision and major site plan review for July tenth, under the condition that all revised materials are provided to Judy, no later than June twenty-first.
Need a second?
I'll second.
All in favor? Aye, so carries, there you go. Now, if you, if anyone wants to go down there and take a site view, you need to speak to the student who's here and I'll take care of it.
Okay.
And I'm happy to bring anybody in.
If you do a site visit, can you just send an email out and get this out, just quick, send it out?
I'll go with you.
All right. Well, let's talk about a convenient time.
You two figure it out.
You have, um, I think you have Amanda's email, so if you guys would just, when you get the cable, take your time, get it to Amanda and she'll make the arrangements for you.
Yep.
If you are willing, would you like to?
Okay, we have another party that's interested.
I think that's, you know, all the, for us, that party.
That's good.
Thank you.
Perfect, thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much.
Here up next, here, there you go. I'll send, uh, revision submission of a potential approval resolution, so your turn.
I'll go with Jamie's husband, Brunch.
Okay.
Absolutely.
Okay.
I have eggs.
Yeah, you got your fresh eggs to the moon.
Fresh eggs.
You know what I'm saying?
Fresh eggs.
Can you send it, can you send it, can you put it up on air for us?
No. When I first started, it was. Mr. Chairman, you lie, I stand up.
Go ahead, do what you got to do.
Yeah, I know, too. Would the board mind if I laid it out on cable, so we hear that? You will be meeting? Eric Trump, I have to, oh, yeah. Okay. Okay.
This is a, basically a lot line realignment. We're taking an old farm, and I always get the same one, I want to say it's the Yale Farm. A Yale Farm, and we're partitioning it amongst three different properties. We're giving it one lot to a property up here, a couple pieces to a property down here, and another small section to a property up there. All the acreages are laid out, assembled. The one issue that came up, and you're going to forgive me, excuse me, I got to get my notes, the one issue that came up dealt with the road, and, um, we were able to work with Mr. Hall, the surveyor, and Mike Segalpin, and we have a letter in the record, which, um, in his opinion, this doesn't constitute an existing subdivision because it's a road by use, and the deeds very clearly kind of go back and forth across that road, so it's already, and according to the county records, it's already one lot.
Can't road, right?
Pardon me?
Can't roads, is it?
Yep, can't road, can't road. So we have a letter from Mike Segalpin closing that loophole. Um, everything we've asked for has been done, there's one minor addition that has to be made here dealing with the, um, scenery protection overlay, there's a couple pieces that have to be added. Um, he did add some of the other ones, but that one got missed, and I'll get him the data. But other than that, um, as far as I'm concerned, all the issues have been satisfied. Um, there, and, uh, there is an easement that's noted and goes with this existing farm road. Paul has looked at the language, there was one name that didn't ring, but it deals with one of these properties, I think one of these owners has two different names. It's called Hoplone Farm in one and something else in another. But anyway, um, our recommendation is the public hearing is still open, so that you would, uh, open and close the public hearing, providing there's no substantive comment. And then I think Paul had worked on our resolution, uh, and I think we're at that point. Sorry.
We hope the, we hope the public hearing on this, um, matter, um, is there any other public comments in this matter as we speak? I'm going to open up to the public, and if you are, go up to the microphone and state your name, please.
Uh, my name is George Bistranseno, I live at thirty-four ninety-eight Route three forty-three in Armenia. Um, I, I'm, on the, on this property are two historic houses. Uh, the, um, Deacon Barlow House dates from seventeen seventy-four. Its architecture is seventeenth-century English, kind of unique to the area. Uh, across the street is the Thomas Barlow House, I think seventeen eighty is when it was first started. Um, I am interested in making sure that these houses are preserved and kept up. That's really my only, only concern. I just want to make sure, I, I'd be interested in knowing what the owners want to do, especially with the property that these houses are, are on, and make sure that they preserve it. That's all.
Okay, go up to the microphone and state your name.
I'm Sharon Kroger, I'm a member of the CAC. Uh, I understand the concerns that George has. He has high standards for saving old houses, and it's, it's an addition, it's good for us to hear from him when he says these things, because it's an important input. My understanding of this, uh, land arrangement is that it's constructively set up in order to help preserve these older houses. So I really believe that the folks involved in this really intend to keep these houses, uh, to do the best they can and to make sure that the land doesn't get inappropriately developed.
Okay, thank you. Is there, is there any other public comment? Seeing none, I need a motion to close the public hearing.
Uh, so move.
I need a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, so carries. Okay, um, Paul?
We have a draft, uh, resolution, I'll just read the resolve clauses.
Yep, that'd be great.
Uh, resolved that in accordance with the subdivision law, the planning board hereby approves the minor subdivision plan entitled Lot Line Alteration Map, uh, prepared by Spencer Hall Land Surveyor dated November twenty-seven, twenty twenty-three, last revised May twenty-first, twenty twenty-four, the approved plat, subject to the following conditions, approval by the planning board attorney of the proposed deeds, uh, confirmation by the planning board's engineer that any remaining technical comments have been satisfied, and confirmation of payment of any outstanding, um, escrow fees. Be it further resolved that the planning board hereby authorizes the chair to stamp and sign the approved plat, certifying as the approved final plat upon the applicant's compliance with the above conditions and the final plat's mission requirements of the subdivision law. Be it further resolved that pursuant to the subdivision law, no changes, erasures, modifications, or revisions shall be made to the final plat after signing by the chair. In the event that, uh, that happens, um, and the final plat contains any such changes, plat shall be considered null and void, and the planning board shall institute proceedings to have the plat stricken from the records of the Dusches County. of the Duchess County Clerk's Office and the Town Clerk's Office. Be it further resolved that within five days of the date of this resolution, a copy shall be filed with the town clerk, and a copy shall be mailed to the applicants with that, within that same period. Be it further resolved that this resolution shall take effect immediately.
Need a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Need a second?
I'll second.
We'll call vote.
We have discussion after we do?
Yes.
Sure.
Okay, just to echo what George said, the comprehensive plan specifically mentions the Deacon Barlow House. And we're obligated to follow what's recommended in the comprehensive plan, as I understand state law. So as long as this doesn't affect that house.
Well, there's no proposed improvements, there's no proposed changes. We jumped through a lot of hurdles to make sure that the lots associated with those houses were all kept together. So that's, that's why we had to get the opinion of Mike, because one house is on one side of Kent Road, the house is on the other side of the Kent Road. Unfortunately, they're all in the same deed, and the man who wants them is down here. So the only way we could do that is to kind of land hook things around. So the intent was to preserve ownership of the lots associated with that house under one individual.
I, I mention it only to remind us so that we're always conscious of the comprehensive plan in our actions. Yep. Thank you. Excellent.
We'll call vote, Julie.
Well, our resolution was voted upon with all the support of his colleagues. Was junior chairperson?
Yes.
Me and the deputy, deputy chairperson?
Yes.
John Stephanopoulos?
Yes.
James Walsh?
Yes.
Walter Deacon?
Yes.
Kenneth Polsky?
Yes.
David DiTello?
Yes.
Okay, we're good to go.
Thanks, Spencer. Yeah, I'll be, I'll be in touch with you.
Silan, we drew their, from the agenda tonight. And we, other matters, we need to approve the minutes from 5:08 table from last meeting. 5:0824. Need a motion to approve the minutes.
Wait, there were a couple of things in here that were flagged, right? Because they didn't, for John to review some of the language.
Oh, I, I missed that. Judy did forward me things, and I just hadn't had a chance to get to it.
Okay.
I will look at them. I didn't understand what was permitted, okay.
And, I mean, was the, one of the, one of the items was the discussion about how that Yale Farm was going to be parsed out, like, five acres here, 10 acres there, whatever. That you had the details of that, but, but it was not clear in the minutes. And then, I think, the other thing was the five bedrooms, blah, 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 blah. That also wasn't clear in this. And then from the May 22, there was two comments, one that you should take a look at. And the other one was about, when they were talking about, for Silan, when, when Mr. O'Leary was talking about the lighting package that was installed, but they weren't using, like, there was just a standard package of lighting that was installed at one of the courts, but they weren't using the lights, or they had no intention of turning them on, or whatever. That is not, that discussion in here is not captured. So I think maybe one of you guys should just take a look at that and try to make sure that we get the language that right. Because I think that was super important, that they committed to just not turning them on.
The mentioning of Silan, and not to get into the matter, but we did provide a draft resolution. Walter gave me one comment back. But I would, I would encourage you all to look at the conditions in particular, because I tried to pick up on some of the themes that we were talking about at the last meeting. And any feedback that you all have would be helpful because we're going back and forth with the applicant to try and make sure that they're accepting of any conditions that the board might see as appropriate.
Okay, well, since we're talking about it, the, the plant, the operations plan that they submitted with the last application doesn't incorporate some of the changes that we had requested, like, a year ago. Right? So I think you, you mentioned some of them last time about how-
I told you, Captain, we'll still, but they added a couple of strange rooms, too, that we got a clarification on. Because they, they mentioned covered courts in the summer. Well, there are no covered courts in the summer. But in point of fact, what they intended to do is, once they get the ice rink out, they may put temporary tennis courts in the ice rink to be used in a longer period within the ice rink.
Okay.
But, but you're right, there's some clarifications we needed, and that's one of the things we're still talking to the applicant about.
Okay, because we had, you had asked for specific times to be put in for hours of operation, not daylight hours only. That was one of the very specific things. There's also a provision in here about the whole discussion about other community groups being able to use the facilities, but not between May and October, which is fine. But then there's a statement in here that says the outdoor tennis and pickleball courts will, can be used by civic groups the first Monday of each month, May through October. But you're not allowed to use it there between May and October. So just stuff like that that is a little weird.
That was some of the things that they-
We discussed from round and round ago.
Yeah. We'll go back and revisit that, yes, ma'am.
So do you want us to give you our comments on this?
Yes, please.
Or do you want to just break it up here?
Yep.
Got it.